We ready, Alex? Okay, welcome to August ninth, two thousand twenty-three Planning Board meeting. Pursuant to the open meeting by law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any media. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. The City Charter, section nine through eighteen mandates that all multiple member bodies develop and adopt rules or policy for public comment. We have adopted such a policy which in short provides for citizen input on Planning Board's specific matters at the end of each meeting. There's a sign-up sheet that is located in the back of the room. I'm going to do attendance. Gloria Pacheco.
Present.
Beth Andre.
Present.
Mario Luciola.
Present.
Mike Farias.
Present.
And I, John Ferrer, present as well. We do not have Nina Kruger here today, but we do have Patty Agia, administrative clerk, Dan Agia, the planner and engineer, city engineer, Chris Perreno, assistant planner, and we have four of us TV. We do have Alex Mello in the back. First on old business, we have road reconstruction, Wood Street. Section sixty-six dash one eighty-five, city ordinance, considering the roadway reconstruction plan and profile of Wood Street extension. Dan?
Mr. Chairman, if we can first, I would offer that, you know, this has been tabled for a few months. We've been working with the applicant and the engineer. I can offer that he's satisfactorily addressed all of the outstanding comments that we had, and has provided a list of what requested waivers would be under your rules and regulations. So at this time, I would recommend approval as the plan as it's presented and listed waivers as well. But if you would like to ask any questions of the engineer, he is here this evening. It's a fairly easy project, extension of Wood Street, approximately eighty feet, I believe, off of, off of Preston.
Please give us your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Sean Ainsworth, one eighty-seven Bailey Street. Four of them asked. As Dan said, we've been back and forth with the comments and the design. Basically constructing about a hundred and twenty feet of roadway for access to two single-family homes on the south side. There were some waivers we had asked for. Again, they were in the waiver letter. The board cares. I can go through all the waivers, or we can just refer to the letter. That's up to you people. But I think, you know, we've addressed all the issues as far as drainage goes. We've done the best we can as far as drainage. It's a small area. It's confined inside of an existing paper road, which is the extension of Wood Street. And at that, we just, there's just not that much area to try to meet all the drainage. So we've done the best we can to slow the water down and get rid of as much of it as we can. Individual homes that we designed have roof drain infiltration systems. So they'll, we've reduced the drainage coming off those lots because of that. That's basically it. One thing we did do is we shifted the road to the south in order to save a few of the trees on the north side of the road, some substantial trees, eighteen-inch trees. So we shifted it over to the south. So that way, it's offset, it's not centered, but it's offset. We've also asked for reductions in the width of the asphalt and asked for elimination of any curb in Cape Cod berm or anything. So that way, the water just flows off the edge into the riprap swales that we have going down into a small collection area at the end. It's also a riprap line. The board has any questions?
So these two are the only two houses that are going to be using the extension?
Uh, yes.
These two properties here?
Yeah, that, these two properties here would be the reason for the extension. The house on nine thirty-six across the street actually faces Wood Street. The front door faces Wood Street, but their driveway comes in off of Preston. So I would tend to think they'd have no use to access that area right there, the proposed roadway, what I would assume because eventually, if they wanted to, I guess they could, but...
I see, like you said, you got the Caltex systems in there.
Yeah.
Does the board have any questions?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. The, so the drainage is going west to east to the bottom portion on that. I do know that area has, it looks like an open field or something of that to the east of it, of these lots. Is there any potential of expanding this road any further to the east, or is, you're just applying to this? I don't know if your owners own that land as well, or...
That area to the east roughly about, I'm going to say from where we're showing our straw wattles. It drops off quite a bit, almost five or six feet sharply. And that's where the other side of Wood Street comes up and the asphalt ends. So that's, you know, if you're, if you're out there, I mean, I've been out there a few times, it slows down and all of a sudden it just drops.
Yep.
So initially, we were thinking about connecting the two sides, but it would have created a grating nightmare out there because of the drop.
You good, Mike?
Yep.
Is anyone in the audience here for this? What is the board's pleasure?
May the motion approve the roadway reconstruction section for Wood Street?
I second it.
Okay, so we have the first by Gloria, second by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
That was easy, huh?
Second on the whole business, a surety reduction, Fieldstone Lane, Brookfield Terrace, and Stony Brook Circle. Review and discuss surety reduction request for Highland Farms Two, Fieldstone Lane, Brookfield Terrace, and Stony Brook Circle.
We have requested interim as built so that we could determine, you know, to make sure everything was constructed completely. When you drive out there, yes, you see pavement, but that doesn't tell you that the drainage was installed correctly, the right elevations, does water flow downhill. So they're in the process of providing that information on an interim as-built plan. So we've yet to receive that. So I would just recommend that you table the matter until next meeting, and hopefully we receive it before then.
Do I have a motion to table this?
Motion to table.
Motion by Beth?
I second.
Second by Mario. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. Approval of the minutes of the June fourteenth meeting. I believe we were all here. Was everybody, is everybody here?
Beth is not here.
Yeah.
The July one wasn't, was it?
So Beth was the only one that wasn't here.
I'm on it.
Yep. We have a motion to approve the minutes of June fourteenth.
I make a motion to approve.
Second?
I second it.
Mike, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, on the new business, street renaming, Third Street. Request renaming of a portion of Third Street between Bedford and Borden Street as Gene Baptiste LaPage Street, referred by City Council on June twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three.
Is there anybody here that wants to give an initial presentation?
Sure. And I've got some letters also to read.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name's Colin Dias. My address is five sixty Ray Street. I was actually reading the individual who submitted a petition to the City Council, and I just prepared a few remarks, if I may. Good evening. Tonight, I stand before you to request a positive recommendation to the City Council for a meaningful change within our community. I propose that we honor the legacy of an exceptional individual who I've come to research and get to know through that research by renaming a section of our city, and that would be the section of Third Street between Bedford and Borden. I believe, I believe we're all disappointed over the removal of the Route seventy-nine Memorial without a publicized replacement, without a plan in place of someone who was raised in this community and sacrificed his life for our country. As we consider the renaming of Third Street, let us ensure that the memory of the past is preserved and cherished. Again, this impact of renaming the street to the Gene Baptiste LaPage Street, well, it would have a minimal, if not nonexistent, impact on our residents. There's no, to my knowledge, and I read the Herald News article, there's no residential houses, no residential anything between Bedford to Borden on Third Street. I believe there are a few businesses. I don't know if they're here in opposition, I don't know if they have to support, but if, we don't hear any opposition. I heard before the meeting, I overheard before the meeting that it may have a slight impact on business. I'd like to hear from them. I'd like to hear from those businesses that are located on Third Street. And also overheard, there might be, I know we have the overpass being rebuilt. I know that's under the state hands, that may come into the city eventually, but I don't think this can should be pushed down the road. I think we should have a plan now, and I think renaming the street right here is an overpass, and like I said, is going to have very minimum business impact on businesses and no impact on the residents of our community. I believe this would be a great choice to plan to rename the street for. And as we reflect on Mr. LaPage's history, let us remember his selfless service during a critical period. Let's not forget, his fearless deployment to the Western Front showcases unwavering commitment to our nation. It is fitting that we honor his memory by renaming a part of our great city after him. Again, I urge you to consider this proposal with the utmost respect for the legacy of Mr. LaPage. Let us, let his memory embrace, and let this bind us as a community. And I know when my uncle Will Flanagan was mayor, his administration did a lot for, for a lot for veterans in this community, and I hope that tradition can continue.
Thank you, Mr. Dias. Anyone else? Just state your name and address for the record.
Yes, thank you.
My name is Jason Bouchard-Naraki. Address is forty-five Bigelow Street. In full disclosure, I am the chair of the Fall River Historical Commission. I am here as a private citizen, however. I learned just last week that the, of the proposal to rename Third Street after Jean Baptiste LaPage. I do feel that it is, there are different streets or possibly public plaza that would be more appropriate. Just this past February, the National Park Service approved the Third Street Commercial Corridor Historic District. That process is a years-long effort between the State Historical Commission, property owners, excuse me, and the district itself only contains two properties, eighteen to thirty-third street and thirty-eight to forty-eighth third street. It does run from Bedford Street down to North Frontage Street, or I guess Pleasant Street on that map. Those two properties are residential, mixed-use, or at least thirty-eight to forty-eighth third street is residential. I believe it's owned by Tony Cordero. The neighboring property, eighteen to thirty, is mixed-use. I believe it does have apartments in there as well. But the process to create a historic district is not simple, especially National Register. You have to meet with the property owners. Depending on the scale, it can take a year, it can take two years or more, depending on the scope of the, of the district. And in this case, it is a smaller district, but historic districts are meant to be expanded over time. The city is in the process of looking at expanding the downtown historic district, which is a completely different area. But in this case, this particular district, the unifying factor, it is named after Third Street, which is, runs right through it. We have other districts in the city that are based on geography. You have the Highlands Historic District, you have the Steep Brook Historic District. And in some cases, we have a cultural district, historic district, like the Corky Row National Registered District. So this process to, or at least to rename the street, would undo a lot of that effort that was spent, probably, and I would imagine at some expense to hire a preservation consultant to even draft the form. I do have a copy, I only have one unfortunately, but just for two properties on the, on the street, it is quite substantial what goes into creating a National Registered District. So I'm happy to pass this over to you. But I do feel that there is an alternative to, or other streets perhaps, or a plaza that could be renamed, or Mr. LaPage.
Thank you, Mr. Naraki. Thank you. Anyone else? Good evening. Please state your name and your address for the record.
I'm Rick Manzini. I'm here as a private citizen, but I will disclose that I am the co-chair of the Historic Commission, and I know all the comments that were just made. This is short notice for us. We were just made aware of this, this happening. I myself served in the military in the early sixties, so I understand fully the commitment that's, that was made by Mr. Baptiste LaPage, and he should be honored, that should not be removed or, or destroyed, not that memory. I know the commitment, and particularly when someone gives their lives, so that we can actually come here and speak like this freely without government interference. He put his life on the line for that, so his memory should be withheld. I agree, one hundred and fifty percent. But we're also working very, very hard in the city of Fall River to revitalize a lot of the historic properties, the historic nature of Fall River. And this plan that's being revitalized now is one of probably a half a dozen in the city that are being done that you're both well aware of. So I would myself, if I could make a recommendation, that was my first. The second recommendation was if you could table this to your next meeting, that would allow the Historic Commission to meet, get some more data for you, and at the next meeting, we could present in a, in a full fashion and give you much more data on why, and maybe speak with Mr. Dias, if he could come to our, we could invite him to our meeting, find an alternate location for this memorial, even a better memorial than it, than just naming a short street. Okay? I thank you very much for your time.
Can we just have your address, sir?
Oh, I'm so sorry. It's two forty-three French Street here in Fall River.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Dave?
David LaPage, eleven forty-four Bedford Street, I'm a direct descendant. And his, his brother, Charles LaPage, really earnest, went with him. So they were together in the war together. We have the actual picture of all the people dedicated that went for the first platoon out of Fall River in front of the old Notre Dame church. And we got a lot of info on it. When this, when the overpass was destroyed, I spent close to three months trying to find this sign, and nobody knew where it was. I talked to mass transfer, trans, everything. I talked to Mr. Menad Menid, who's in charge of...
Charlie.
Charlie, okay? And they had no clue where the sign was. Three weeks later, I get a phone call, a gentleman came to my house and gave me the sign. So I have to sign up, and I don't care where it goes, but I would like to see him still remembered as fighting in World War One as a hero. I don't care where it goes. I think if it goes to Third Street, we were talking before, it would be a bit of a hassle for all the people that lived there, changing everything. There was a proposal that might come out later on, on someplace else that it might be able to go. I think that'd be a good thing. Actually do.
So you're not opposed if it's not there, it's somewhere else?
I'm not opposed whatsoever.
What about the timeframe if it's, I mean, it's going to take a little bit of time to do this, but if it takes a little bit of time for the state to transfer that over to the, to the city and do it that way?
Not a problem whatsoever.
There's no problem.
The LaPage family...
Pretty much you're the only relative descendant from, you know, the LaPage.
Well, I have two brothers, and then there's all, everyone else has passed. They, I talked to all of them within the past couple of days, because I didn't even know this, this was going on, till my landlord, who Mario knows, sent the paper to me, and I read it, and I said, well, I have to be here, because I want to see what's going on, and I'd really like to see it come up again. I don't know when, just I hope it's in my lifetime.
Well, I think we should table it till we see what, you know, what's on the state and stateside.
Yeah, so what I'd like to at least add is that, over the last months, the administration has been working with Mass DOT about the renaming of some specific lost space, this being one of them through that car in the project. It was also, the Northern U-turn was also named after Edward Joachim, who was also another veteran. So we've been working with them to determine where should these spaces be relocated to, whether it's one of the overpasses, one of the underpasses, which is an artist's display kind of a space. There's a little bit of a city park that's being added, there could be a square at any of the corners. There were two very large signed areas welcoming to the city. There's, there are a number of places, I think that would be a little bit more grand and a little bit more fitting, close to where the initial dedication spot was. And it's important to understand that the dedications that took place, these were through the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. These were not dedicated City of Fall River spaces. That's why currently now, that land is owned by the state. So we are, we're kind of at their whim determining where they go. If this was at the point where it's become city property, then it would just be an internal thing. So we would ask for patience in trying to determine where this location is. If there's not a specific reason that Third Street is being considered, like is there, if, if he grew up on Third Street, or if there was some significance to the location of Third, why not Fourth, why not Fifth? It could be a number of streets. If there's nothing specific to Third, I can't see why we can't wait and find something a little more substantial and grand, so that we don't end up with a sign that gets lost in the middle of, of a state highway somewhere. So, you know, it is very important that we acknowledge our veterans, their service, and the history that they've been able to provide for us. So this isn't something that should just be jumped into. So I think table in the matter. You can always just send it back to the council without recommendation, positive or negative. I don't think it's, if there was nowhere else to do it, and Third Street had some meaning, then, then you could think about it a little bit differently, but you haven't been presented with that information.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just thinking, if we kick it back to them, and then it gets shuffled again, and then back to us, tabling it keeps it within us.
Yeah, okay.
And then we can just keep table until we, between Mike and, and so on, find out a, you know, a logistical...
We may be able to get a resolve, you know, you know, put it on the, on the front burner with the state, so at least we know...
Yep.
Where it's going to end up. It's not going to get constructed yet, a sign won't be placed if the project's done, but, but we could have specific...
The sign I have will be going up on the porch very shortly.
Okay.
May I just weigh in for just one second? I, I know both these bodies, individuals. I've actually, my firm, who, who's located here in Fall River, LDD Collaborative, did the Preservation Society Historical District in his, in, in the Highland area, so I do understand the process to that. That being said, I think the dedication of just a road to Mr. LaPage is worth a lot more than just what his sacrifices were, than just a dedication of a road. And again, we're the landscape architects and urban designers on the Route seventy-nine project. We, we knew exactly that sign. We knew exactly what was going to happen with that sign. There's a, a process, you know, this, that highway or that land was city-owned, then it was transferred over to the state, then it was transferred over to the federal highway, now it's going back to the state, and then it's finally going to be to the city. And so, as we mentioned, in the southern U-turn area, there is going to be a plaza in that area where there's going to be artist's place to it. We've actually dedicated six panel areas for historical, whatever it might be, the city decides to, but very similar to the spaghetti ramp gateway, we have some historical, I think it would be more of an honor to your family, to Mr. LaPage, and for the city, and for the other individual who had passed away, sacrificed their life, to have something much more memorial in those areas. And so, they weren't forgotten, they'll never be forgotten, but I think they also deserve the, the proper respect and memorial of that instead of just a sign. So a lot of this stuff has been, you know, in the process, and it takes a little time, but I think that would probably be the best solution to this, and it wouldn't have any impacts on any of their businesses or any of the, you know, associated component of it, and I think it's a much more glorious opportunity that the city can embrace, so hopefully that's...
I, I agree, and I think since you're not in that much of a, you just want, you just want peace of mind that it's going to go somewhere...
Yes.
Where, where you're going to be happy with, with what it's going, where it's going.
I'll be happy wherever it goes.
And I believe that this scenario that we had here, have here, what we spoke about earlier, I think that's, I think that's definitely a, that's definitely a plus, that's, you know, like Mike said, that's, you couldn't honor him in a better way than with visibility like that.
Excuse me. So Mike, as a landscape architect, what was the plan for those two memorials?
So our, our particular design, we were brought on board to do up to twenty-five percent. So what we did is, we dedicated space there, and at the end of the day, that space will be transferred over to the city itself to figure it out.
Can you be more specific, the space? So the bigger space, the overpass is?
Yeah, so where the, where the, the overpass, the new overpass is, right now, it's being built. It's pretty much adjacent or perpendicular to the pier itself, and so that's a plaza area. And so what we did is, on the, the twenty-five percent conceptual design of this, that this is a great opportunity, not only for artist's space, but historical, there's all, all these different components of signage, wayfinding, and historical elements to it. And so what we were thinking is that, while it's being replaced or being removed on President's Avenue, why don't we relocate it over here and create a dual plaza space for, to represent...
Is that always the plan?
Yep, yep, it's, it's actually...
And both of these gentlemen will be remembered there?
Yeah.
Is that the proposal in your landscape plan?
So, so in the, in the, in the plan itself, as I mentioned just before, the city owned this land before, and then it became a highway.
Before the dedication?
Way back when, about two hundred years ago.
Before there was a highway.
I saw this idea said it was a Commonwealth...
It is. It was Commonwealth dedicated areas.
Yes, and so now, when you get federal funding, it goes from the city-owned to an elevated highway, Route seventy-nine, that's a state highway, and then you get federal funding associated with that state highway. And so then it gets transferred from state, from city to state, state to federal, federal back to state, and then state eventually back to the city. And so we can do whatever we want with it. It's my recommendation that we dedicate it to the two fallen heroes, and basically honor them much more than just having a sign, or just much more than just having a roadway named after...
You said fallen heroes. I, I would like to, my personal opinion is to keep these two gentlemen's names somewhere.
Yes.
Is there a rendition we can get of your proposal when you did that, so that we could help the community decide if that's befitting or not? Is that possible?
Well, I, we don't have, we have basically identified the space as what it's for, not what the ultimate goal is going to be, the, the finished product. But what I would recommend is, you know, I was just speaking with Mr. LaPage's family member, that they have old photos, and similar to the gateway project, the spaghetti ramp, I don't know if you've been up to the plaza right off of the spaghetti ramp, Route seventy-nine going basically south to the right, there are all these plant, these, these boards that are out there, historical boards. It tells you about the history of the city of Fall River, and so we've dedicated six places underneath this overpass. I was recommending, or I would recommend that we incorporate some of the information you've, you provided with a history of this, instead of just having a name or just a person's name associated with it, because again, when we research this and we look for it, there's very little information. And I mean, it, it's, it's, it doesn't honor the individual just saying a plaque's name, but give some little context of what he did and what his service was and his ultimate sacrifice. So that's kind of what I was suggesting, that, that would be underneath the overpass at the end of the day, so...
Okay, that's not going to conflict with the prior landscape that you submitted?
No.
I just want to make sure that we don't, we don't think it's going to go there, and then the date comes and that's already assigned to something else.
No, it's just a, it's just a holding space.
It's a blank slate right now.
It's a blank slate.
That's what I want to confirm, because...
We're so, we're at the very beginning of this project.
Yeah.
That's why these things have been being discussed, and where, where could we add these things? So we'll, we'll try and speed that process up, so that we can accommodate, you know, both the, the applicant and the family as well, to try and get this resolved.
I would, I would like to table and get more information.
Sure, that's what I...
About Mike's idea, I'd like to just see, and I think the community should probably see it and weigh in on it, and the family and descendants.
You can see most of these plans, actually, if you go to Mass DOT, Route seventy-nine, Fall River, and if you go right down to the landscape plans, it's probably sheet number four hundred.
I'll email you one tomorrow.
Thank you. You're doing everything in my mind, Mario.
We, we literally just finished, it's almost eleven hundred plan review, and we just passed it in Friday, but that's the hundred percent. And so there's early submission packages, but as, you know, the, the timeframe is roughly twenty twenty-six that this thing is going to be done. Hopefully by, sooner than that, we'll have, as the city, ownership of that land, or understand what the ownership's going to look like, but right now, it's, it's, it's on the table that, that overpass and the plaza is going to be owned by the city, and so it'll be up to them, you know? They, they have full ride of what they can do in those particular spaces.
So that was recently submitted?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, and when you, when you were reconstructing it and you knew that was what pass was going to come down?
Yep.
Did you know it was dedicated to an individual, and did you take that into account?
I can't make, I can't... I, I can't make, I can't make the, uh, the bull, I can't make the bold, uh, notion of me, I don't have the authority to say, hey, you should call this. I make the recommendations what you should do. But I don't have the authority to say who's going to say-
Right, but like when we submitted it, when the, the firm, you know, submitted the plans for that area, and they were removing this overpass, I was honoring a certain individual, made of a Fall River. So I would like more information personally. And if you could only that, I'd appreciate it.
Yep.
Now, what we just discussed, just out of curiosity, would that please the three gentlemen that just spoke earlier? Mr. Dias? I mean, I know you were in favor of that, but I think you were more in favor of, of just keeping his memory alive and honoring it. And I think this will help you two gentlemen as well, because with what you're trying to do and down there, and I think Mr. LaPage, I think, that would be, like we stated, a, a better, uh, location and more descriptive, like Mike was saying, if we can get him on a plaque and get some detail about what it was. Apparently Mr. Dias had some information on, uh, on him. Mike said he looked it up and could get very little. So by, by, hopefully getting one of them boards, we could get a nice description, whatever, and you've got plenty of stuff, right?
Yeah. I do, I do, I do.
All right, so we're gonna be looking for you.
Do that. His, his brother actually went with him. And in 1988, and Father Heaven knows, had a story about his brother, who was, uh, he told about his war stuff and da-da-da-da-da, and how, remember Jimmy Rogers', cigar place? Anybody?
Yeah.
Okay? He used to drive to that place every single morning, buy cigars for the day, on a bicycle, never had a license. He went there one time and a kid stole the bicycle. He was 60, he was 66 or 68 years old. Chased a kid down the street, caught him and held him until the cops came. Okay, so LaPage's name is, is known throughout, a lot of them built most of the, uh, buildings in the city. They, most of them were basins, and I got, I got a ton of stories.
All right, awesome.
But, I, again, I've sat on many of boards, and I commend everybody that's here. Your heart's in the right place, and I think we can come up with a solution that really truly honors, um, both parties and their, and the, the people of this community. So, thank you for coming out.
Thank you. I just gotta read, I've got three letters that I've gotta read. One is Jeffrey Gudrow. Good afternoon, members of the Fall River Planning Board. I am writing in support of the proposed street name change of Third Street to Gene Baptist, LaPage Street. We must honor the legacy of Mr. LaPage, and I believe this location best serves this idea. Please make a positive recommendation back to the city council. This project is a no-brainer, and the city should fully support this. Jeffrey Gudrow. Uh, the only thing we request, uh, if someone's gonna send emails, is to please add your address on the bottom of it, so that we know, uh, for the record, uh, where the individual resides. Second one is by Gabriel Amaral, again, no address. Good afternoon, my name is Gabriel Boomer Amaral, and I am writing in support of the renaming of a portion of Third Street to honor Mr. Gene Baptist LaPage. I hope you give this a yes vote, as he is deserving of such an honor to keep his name alive in our great city. Thank you for, very much for your time, Gabriel Boomer Amaral. Uh, I've got another one, Nelson Vasquez, from 210 Sunset Hill Fall River. Hello, everyone, due to my work schedule this evening, I couldn't be there tonight to say a few words about the very important topic on tonight's agenda. I am submitting my input to you, uh, this way because the topic is very important to Fall River and its people. I really wish I could be there tonight for Gene. Even though I didn't serve with him, I am a serving, I am serving him tonight. Renaming the street after Gene LaPage Baptist is, uh, is something he deserves, because this topic involves one of our own that deserve proudly, that serve proudly. As we know by now, his recent dedication has been torn down due to a project that I believe is, isn't going to be mainly for Fall River residents. Even though the new Route 79 project is located in our city, it's going to be mainly for rich out-of-town folks. Renaming this street shouldn't be a hard thing to figure out. Supporting this agenda item is not only what's right, but it keeps Gene LaPage's legacy alive, which is honorable. Supporting our veterans in the past, present, and future is something that we all can agree on. For example, back on May 30th, 2011, the city embarked on something similar like this by dedicating the post office downtown to honor Army Sergeant Robert J. Barrett. Therefore, let's do something for Fall River that honors Gene LaPage Baptist's valor and commitment to our nation by renaming a street after him. Thank you all for your time and attention tonight. Sincerely, Nelson Vasquez. Okay, so we've got that, uh, um, so do I have a motion to table this?
Can I make a motion to table, to the upcoming meeting and get more information?
Oh, more information, okay. Motion by Gloria, second by Beth, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed? So that's what will happen, we'll, we'll table it, then we'll try to get more direction, uh, and information as far as hopefully, uh, getting a nice little spot over there. And Mike will have more information, I'm sure, for us and Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Flavin, it's Baptist, not Baptist. It's a jizz.
Well, he said he also was headed backwards, so that's why I had to, had to read it twice, I'm like, wait a minute.
Thank you all.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item number two, Form A application for endorsement of plan believed not to require approval and/or plan of land. File number 23-1554. Owner applicant, VRT Realty Trust. Property location, 4011 and 4041 North Main Street. Assessors map, X-03-0042, 0050, 0051.
So that I don't say it four times, there's four Form A plans that are before you this evening. They all meet the requirements for A and R endorsement, and I recommend that they each be endorsed. But by all means, if you review it, have any questions, I'd be more than glad to answer any of them.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions on this, uh, on this Form A? This one looks pretty cut dry. Do I have a motion to approve the A and R as presented?
I make a motion to approve.
Motion, uh, motion by Mario, second?
I, I reviewed it on second.
My, second by Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, uh, number three. Form A application for endorsement of plan believed not to require approval and/or plan of land. File number 23-1555. Owner applicant, Dan Quintel Jr. and Dan Quintel Sr. Property location, 26 California Street. Assessors map, J-08-0014. Uh, we've already got, um, Mr. Agia's blessing on all four. Uh, anybody have any questions on this one?
It's a creative one.
Yeah.
But it does meet the requirements, and we actually had to make a few revisions so that we could, that we could offer that comment.
I think you mustn't approve it.
I got a motion by Gloria, second?
Second it.
Second by Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Okay, that's... Number four. Form A, application for endorsement of plan believed not to require approval and/or plan of land. File number 23-1556. Owner applicant, Around the Clock Services, Inc. Property location, 189 and 197 Ridge Street. Assessors map, G-06-0047.
So, these are the chairman's favorite types of, uh, A and R plans. So as you know, the applicant goes through the Zoning Board of Appeals process, and they are allowed by special permit to subdivide, uh, existing residential dwellings that were in existence prior to 1954. This is one of those, we had asked that they add some additional easement language and detail the easements to ensure that, you know, both property owners are aware of what they're getting into when they do buy, uh, when they do buy these parcels. So if you look at the actual paper plan, there is a, a larger scale detail that calls out the easements, who they're for the benefit of, and their dimensions and, and areas as well, so.
But, Mr. Agia, was it just already subdivided?
No. Two different houses.
Yeah, right.
One, one lot. So this one's just being subdivided now. It, it received a special permit already.
Okay, 'cause I remember, sorry, I remember looking at this house.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, and I remember the access, and I remember the, I, I remember all about it, yeah.
And you clearly showed no interest, because you don't like this.
You know that. All right, do I, uh, do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Ma, excuse me, excuse me, uh, motion by Mario, second?
I'll second.
Second by Beth, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Last, Form A, excuse me. Application for endorsement of plan believed not to require approval and/or plan of land. File number 23-1557. Owner applicant, Around the Clock Services, Inc. Property location, 280 and 282 Ridge Street. Assessors map, G-07-0052.
Exact same explanation as the last one.
Any questions by the board? Motion by Beth, the second? By Gloria, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Uh, receipt of correspondence, review and discuss notice of a community outreach meeting for, for proposed cultivation and manufacturing marijuana establishment located at 82 Hotwell Street.
I have nothing to add. If you can review, discuss it, accept, place on file, whatever the board's liking is.
Well, the only question I have on here, have they, have we solidified what the city stance on, uh, these facilities? I know we've had some past, uh, uh, run-ins with applications and such not. Has that all been figured out with the, with the city, how they're approaching this?
In general, it has, however, the state legislation, the state legislature is in the process of changing some of those rules and regulations. So they've been, they've been dealing with these as, you know, as they come in. Where this is already an existing, uh, facility for retail sales, they are entertaining this, so. And then on top of that, for about the last year or so, we have, we have draft, uh, new zoning bylaws for these types of facilities, whether they be retail, cultivation, uh, or manufacturing. That is on hold until the state changes. We're hoping that the state law changes to mimic what we were already going to implement in zoning, and then we don't have to go through that process.
This is the one behind the mill and the car wash?
This is where Salter used to be.
Oh, over there?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Isn't that near, um, cosmopolitan? Isn't that like in the same area?
Yeah, so this is cosmopolitan.
Oh, it is cosmopolitan?
This would be the upper floors of that building.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Uh, what is the board's suggestion here?
You don't have to do anything.
Table it?
Just to discuss, but, you know.
I mean, uh, put it on file?
Yeah, or if you want, if you want to, you know, vote, uh, anything, recommend, nothing, or just place on file.
So this is just an announcement for the August 10th public meeting?
Yeah, yeah, so it's just to put you on, yeah, so you have, you have time to-
Yeah, to go to this, to listen to it, yeah, okay.
So, action not required? Well, okay, let's vote to accept it.
Vote to accept.
Okay, vote to accept by Beth, second? Gloria, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Another receipt of correspondence, review and discussion of the nomination of Ashworth Brothers Mill for the National Register of Historic, excuse me, Historic Places, for the Massachusetts Historical Commission.
Again, nothing that needs your approval. Many times, this process is for the purpose of different tax credits and things of that nature, so. Really just an item to be placed on file.
Where, where is, where is this location at? Where Ash Brothers Mill is?
They put it on, yeah, but from what I've, this is, Ashworth Brothers Mill is the one on Gold Mills Avenue, I believe.
Okay.
Where is that?
Yeah, I tried Googling it, I couldn't-
You couldn't find it by that?
Yeah, I couldn't find it.
Old Mills Ave, all the way down the end?
That's where they're, they're talking about right now.
The, the mills that are up top, I think the Ashworth is the one that's directly on your left, the one that's already been developed.
Oh.
You, you take the turn down to Gold Mills, you have a little wetland pond on your left, and then you've got that very next mill complex that had already been developed. Then you, then you head down further and get to Draper. So this is the mill that's already been done up there.
Oh, yes, 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 yes. All the cars from, uh, Costco's.
So, all they want is, uh, basically, the National Historical Division, operation of that for the tax credit. And then they'll come and run the schools later on, and figure out what they gotta do. Oh, so they're just doing it for the grant and the reading?
Okay, but Ashworth Brothers Mill, they just own it? Or they just? That's where-
I see these applications all the time, but I just didn't know what they said. Just know what they were doing with it.
Oh, that's just the name of the mill?
Yeah.
So, so this is, this is a letter from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, just letting you know that this is pending state approvals to be on the National Register. It's just a notification.
Oh.
There's nothing for you to vote for, approve?
We just might get a motion to place on file.
It just gives it a notification.
I make a motion, place on file. Okay, motion to put, place on file by Mario, second?
Second it.
Second by Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're good. And now we got the minutes of the July 12th meeting. I make a motion to approve. Motion by Mario, second?
I'll second.
By Gloria, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And citizens input, so I don't think we had any, they're all here. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Beth, second?
I'll second.
Gloria, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.